We're live, okay. Let's call this committee of the whole meeting to order, December fourth. We have a lighter bench tonight. Councillor McFadden and Flowers are unable to join us. We will move on in their stead. The first thing on the agenda is always the agenda. I need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented, please. Councillor Padeko? Thank you. All those in favor carried and the minutes. Adoption of the minutes of the previous committee of the whole meeting of November twentieth. Minutes, anyone?
The minutes from the previous meeting?
Thank you, Councillor Wilson. All those in favor. Minutes approved. We are on to four A delegations. We do have a delegation with us tonight. We have Route twenty-two. Let me flip to that tab. Yes, the Route twenty-two Artists Collective, please. Ms. Kruger, if you'd like to come to the podium. I'm going to say good evening because it is six.
Good evening. Is this microphone on? Yes?
Yep.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council, everyone here from administration and from the community. I have to say I'm a lot less nervous this time around than I was the first time around coming up here and doing a presentation a couple of years ago. Mainly because I'm here just to say thank you for the funding that the town provided to us in two thousand and twenty-two. I know that that was not an easy decision and that there was a lot of discussion around whether that was a wise use of funds or not. So the purpose of this presentation tonight is really to just give you an update on what we have done with that funding, the progress that we've made for the arts community, and where we're going in the next few years, where we're headed. So without further ado, see if I can move this along. My name is Laura Kruger. I should have introduced myself, so I'm the Executive Director for Route twenty-two Artists Collective in Cochrane. And as I've already mentioned, the purpose of the presentation really is to give you the update on impacts and progress achieved thanks to the funding. And we did receive fifty thousand dollars in funding from the town in two thousand and twenty-two. That was a one-time ask that we came forward with post-COVID. And I'll get into that a little bit more here. See if I can go the right direction. So just to give you a little overview, I'll try to make this quick and not go beyond the ten-minute window that we've been provided. Who we are, a little bit about the funding, the original request, what we've accomplished, the outcomes and the impact, and then moving forward from here. So who we are, for those who aren't familiar, we're a nonprofit organization that was established in two thousand and twenty, which was a really tough time to be starting an organization. The purpose of the organization is to bring together the visual arts community of all disciplines and to build and promote the arts and cultural sector in the town of Cochrane and the rural surrounding communities. So that really was intended to encompass all of our rural surrounding counties and the Stony, Stony Dakota Nation as well. We operate a volunteer-based year-round gallery open to the public six days a week, as well as an arts education programming space within a twenty-two-hundred-square-foot leased space in the Safeway Plaza. That's our current home. Board of Direction, or Directors, I should say, governs the collective. And we currently employ a professional team of myself, the Executive Director, the Gallery Director, a Programming Director, and we maintain an executive support team, including our chartered professional accountant and seventy-plus artist members. So the vision that we have, we've just updated our strategic plan, we've updated our vision a little bit. This is where we're going, looking forward, is to build a connected cultural community and a strong creative economy through the arts. So the creative economy is something that I'll talk about a little bit and just touch on, and that's kind of a bigger-picture piece that goes beyond just the visual arts. So to recap, when we came here in two thousand and twenty-two, we did request assistance of fifty thousand dollars for a post-COVID urgent need to maintain the art space and operations that we had established at that time. We started the operational business really in two thousand and twenty, after two years of volunteer groundwork. There was thousands of hours of volunteer time that went into that. And we opened just as the COVID pandemic hit. So obviously, operating that nonprofit volunteer-based organization through COVID was a huge challenge, and especially being in a commercially-priced leased space. So the town investment provided some really huge financial stability to our arts community and fostered a sense of cultural pride and identity within our town, which was very much needed post-COVID, and I think continues to be a huge social need. We also expressed at that time a desire to be considered for inclusion in future town space options and planning as that evolves. And we also offered to support the town to guide a broader arts and cultural mandate and vision with a goal of creating an ongoing, permanent financial support framework for arts and culture within the town budget. And really, the message was just by utilizing the creative and professional strength that we have at Route twenty-two, we can do mutually beneficial things for the community by working together. So the creative economy, just to touch on this a little bit, I was really fortunate to go to the Mayor's Gala for the Arts in Calgary a few weeks ago. And it was incredible. It was just a really eye-opening immersion into the bigger art scene that's on the doorstep of Cochrane. And one of the things that they really were highlighting that night was a big study and publication that they've done to break down what is the impact of the creative economy on Calgary and on Canada. So Calgary alone contributes two-point-one billion to Canada's GDP through their creative economy. There's many facets to this, but really, they identified that trying to keep, especially a younger population within Calgary, and to try to grow a diversified economy, they're really focusing on putting that creative emphasis on all aspects of the city, departments and planning going forward. So they're really recognizing that there's a huge impact that this creative economy has. This little graphic is really, I think, a great graphic to just kind of break down what is it? What is that creative economy? And it goes beyond, like I said, the visual arts. So there's culture, which we fall within in Route twenty-two at this point in time. There's also museums and libraries and heritage and performing arts within that. There's the cultural industries of film and video broadcasting, gaming, music, publishing, and interactive media. The transversal industries, so cultural tourism, creative education, computer system design. So that brings in the tech sector into the creative economy as well, which is a huge one, which wasn't formally sort of included under that umbrella, but it's really been recognized as a creative industry. Design, architecture, photography, advertising, fashion. So all of these things contribute to the creative economy. So how do we leverage the town funding? It really motivated us to collaborate further at a municipal, regional, and federal level because we saw that there was really a need for that to be sustainable long-term. We leveraged the additional funding that was provided to get a federal funding agreement in place, which has really been a game-changer for us. We recently signed the agreement for three years with Western Economic Diversification Canada under their Community Economic Development and Diversification Program. And so that's currently helping us with expenses such as technology, salaries, wages, contractor fees, marketing promotions, website development, and event costs. The federal funding does necessitate a fifty percent matching contribution, so the town funding was a big chunk of that. We're still about a hundred thousand dollars away from accessing the full one-hundred-and-ninety-seven-thousand-five-hundred that's been committed. So we're working on that. We also had funding and support from all of these partners in the town of Cochrane as well, which contributed to that funding agreement. So that combined funding from Town of Cochrane and the federal government really grows the recognition and support base for what we're doing. There's some great quotes there that I won't read through, but we just put out a press release recently around this federal funding agreement. And so there was some great quotes from an MP for Calgary and Minister for Prairies Can just emphasizing, you know, that the investment really does do a lot for the local economy and helps to diversify and strengthen the entrepreneurs that we have in this community. And they really are looking at artists as entrepreneurs. So that was a nice kind of a spin on what we were originally sort of envisioning with applying for this grant. You know, they really were supportive of helping us walk through this process. And through that process, they really said, well, what you're doing really is you're bringing forward sixty different entrepreneurs and developing their skills and putting that back out into the community as stronger skill sets and entrepreneurs. So that's the way that that is being focused is really around the economic development. So what we've done with that, just to highlight a little bit, is we've really improved our technology, marketing and promotions. We now employ three part-time employees, which are all local women, who are also professional practicing artists and mothers of busy families as well. We have contract positions that we hire on a regular basis for specific needs. And our website development has really come a long way. So we've got a great website with a online presence as well for sales, and we're building that end of the revenues as well. I should also mention that we do also employ Muse Designs in Cochrane to provide all of that web and marketing support. So that's just another local business that's being supported by the work we're doing. Events and collaborations, so the town also provided us with a large-scale funding grant of fifty-one-hundred dollars in two thousand and twenty-three specifically for the Come Paint Alberta Festival circuit that we've been working on. We launched the first one of these in two thousand and twenty-two with Glenbow Ranch Provincial Park. And then the second year, this past year, we brought in four other regional arts organizations to collaborate on that and build it. And so that was, this past year was the first year we'd done it as a circuit with all of these other organizations, and it's really building momentum. We had twenty-five-hundred visitors over our weekend in two thousand and twenty-three. And one of the big focuses for the whole circuit and all of the groups involved was to really work on bringing in Indigenous involvement and building that reconciliation, reconcili action, you could say, of really involving the people that are the Indigenous community around us. So that also boosts tourism, obviously. That's a big draw for tourism is to bring people to the community for these kinds of events. So we're hoping to continue that as an annual, ongoing festival circuit. We're just mentioning a few of the things we've been involved with and collaborated with. So Innovate Cochrane Pilot Participating Organization, that's a pilot project that we're involved with, with Innovate Cochrane. We're building and delivering the artist entrepreneurial programs through this federal funding stream, which that's going to be something that we roll out over the next couple of years to train, give further training to artists. Bunkhouse Bonanza, we were a part of that, and then all of these other lovely events, including the FCSS Mental Health Awareness Week, which was really awesome. The Cochrane High School Student Art Exhibition was in Ichinabiti, that's the House of Oneness. We've been really partnering with them, sharing our space previous to them having a space, and we're working together with them on multiple projects. So that's been a good collaboration and one we're trying to grow. And then the Chinook Film Group is also making use of our space. The World Photographic Cup Exhibition was hosted in our gallery. And we're just coming up to hosting a volunteer appreciation event for Helping Hands, which would be the first one that we've done, but we're really looking forward to that. Milestones and successes and achievements, so these, just touch on a few things. We had forty member artists in two thousand and twenty-two. We've now grown to over seventy in two thousand and twenty-three, and that includes individuals from pretty much all of the local visual arts groups. So I think that's a big win to bring all of those diverse groups to the table, the same table. And we have an increasing number of support memberships, so that's non-artist members just wanting to have the connection with the creative community. And we've just created a new category for community support memberships for businesses and nonprofits. The visitation in the gallery, we've tracked at over ten thousand visitors since two thousand and twenty. We've had the honor of the Best of Cochrane Gold Award for three years in a row. And then we are increasing the programming and participation and offerings that we're doing with our programming department. And we've had ages five to ninety-five come and participate in the program. So it's a really wide range of folks from the town that are connecting with us. The year-round tourism, so this is just a little note of where tourism seems to be headed, just in diving into that a little bit. You know, they're really looking to promote rural tourism across Southern Alberta and Alberta broadly, but including a focus on Cochrane area. And with the creative economy being the fastest-growing economy in the world, I think Cochrane is really well-positioned to benefit from an enhanced, connected arts community. So that's where we see this headed. I think if we work towards just building that vibrant community of cultural sort of happenings, I think there's some obvious connection points between Banff and Canmore and Calgary that is sort of a gap that we can really serve in Cochrane. So I think there's a lot of opportunity and potential there. So moving forward, towards sustainability, because obviously we recognize that right now our sort of balance of funding is tipped quite heavily towards subsidized funding from the different levels of government and sponsorship. And our revenue generation is a big chunk of it, but we're trying to build that to be a bigger chunk. So our strategic plan priorities for the next little while that we've just narrowed down to try to get a really good focus on include revenue generation, increasing our social value, exercising good governance, and securing a long-term facility. So that's a key piece. Obviously, as I've mentioned, the space we're in is very expensive and it's not a sustainable place long-term. So we're currently just working to establish an inclusive, creative community and vibrant center that becomes a multi-use cultural landmark and that can drive tourism, economic growth, and provide social value for all residents. And it's a pretty broad vision at this point in time, but really, we're looking for the next four to six months to chair a roundtable committee of the nonprofit groups, not just arts and culture, but social profit groups as well, such as Helping Hands. And we've invited the town also through Michelle DeLorme, I've been speaking with, just to see if there's a willingness and a, you know, desire to be a part of that. And ultimately, hopefully, from that, we get a better sense of what are the space needs because we have identified a building in town that we're kind of going after and trying to drive a capital campaign coming up soon to acquire that building. So it's a big project, but that's where we're looking to go. So just a quick touch on some of these successes of just higher-profile associations. We've got some great artists in our mix. I didn't want to touch too much, I've got my own name in there, but that's just mentioning that we have a couple of public sculptures installations that have been commissioned that myself and Milan, who also works for Route twenty-two, is going to be building. We've also got some work in the Banff Caninasca's MLA office by one of our members, William Jones. A lot of our programming directors have some great experience and reputations, longstanding professional reputations with Calgary, Canmore, and the rural arts community. Joanna Cherick, who's our Tourism Executive Director, has had some amazing successes this year. So through her, the World Photography Cup came to have an exhibition at Route twenty-two. So these are all just things that are kind of raising the profile of, I think, of the arts in Cochrane and who we have in the community. And so to recap, really, the funding provided has yielded significant returns in terms of value to the community. And it's resulted in many positive outcomes, economic benefit, community development, support for artists, and significant interest and investment in the creative community in Cochrane from different levels of government, including the federal government, which feels like that's a pretty big step. And I think by investing in the arts, the town has not only stimulated the local businesses and generated revenue, but also supported creation of a cultural scene that's really vibrant and that can foster our community engagement. It's helped artists in the collective to pursue their creative endeavors and contributed to their professional growth and recognition as entrepreneurs. And I think the increased visibility of Cochrane as a hub for artistic expression really brings up the reputation of the town. So it's really just been, you know, an awesome thing. It's really helped us to nurture a great, a great growing creative scene in our town. So to end it all, really, the message here is just thank you. Thank you, Council, thank you, Mayor, thank you, everyone who supported the vision and the work that we were doing. And hopefully, we've shown that there's value in it and that we can continue to work together. Thank you.
Well, awesome. Thank you for your presentation tonight. Council, any questions? Councillor Padeko, you're first out of the gate. Go ahead, please.
No, no questions, Laura. Just congratulations to all of you as a person who's supported this initiative initially. It's great to kind of get an update coming back from you, just on, you know, not coming to kind of continue on looking for funding, but that you're now sustainable and standing on your own two feet, and I'm excited to see your growth. I guess maybe only do you have one question. From the federal funding side, is there any money available to help you capitally to, you know, find that building, fund that building, or anything like that? Or is it really more from an operational side of things?
Yeah, thank you for the question. That this particular funding agreement is only for capacity, internal capacity building. So it can't be used for any sort of, you know, capital investments. There are other funding streams that we're looking at from the federal level and the provincial level to build arts and cultural spaces. So we'll be pursuing some of those for sure. But this one in particular is really just for internal capacity building.
Well, I'm excited to see where you guys end up over the next little while and what you come up with. I know that the arts community is cheering you all on because it's much needed in our community to kind of get something going here, to be able to not only house but to be able to support as well. So thank you again for the update.
You bet.
Yeah, I would echo what Councillor Padeko said. And I don't want to repeat everything you've presented tonight, but it's good to hear feedback from a council perspective, I'll speak for myself. But investing in something and taking a risk sometimes with public funds in the, and you, I think you mentioned it well at the beginning of your presentation, but you coming back and telling us how and what you've done with the funds and how it's been leveraged into all the opportunities that you've presented, it's meaningful. Thank you for that. I don't see any other questions. Looks like you're getting off easy tonight, but maybe you answered them all in your presentation. Thank you again.
Thanks for the time. Thank you.
Moving to business, section five of our agenda. We have five A is our two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-six budget. Mr. Derikott, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I see that your bench is down a few. We're also down Mr. Alim, who's under the weather and sends his regrets. But as you said, we will carry on in the absence there. Pleased to be presenting council day with the outcome now of, starting with administration's work, to put together a draft budget for council's consideration. And then now a budget that we believe reflects the direction council gave through their deliberation period. So I will be giving a quite brief presentation. The report contains the specific information. The outcome that administration is looking for this evening is just confirmation that the proposed budget that would be brought forward in this form, that it would receive a, you know, majority support of council, otherwise we would not bring it forward. So we're looking forward to hopefully tonight getting confirmation that we've achieved that objective. Just as a high-level reminder, when we reflect on the work that's been done on the budget, obviously, the largest guiding principle comes from council's strategic objectives for the community and ensuring that we build a budget that allows us to take action on those principles. Specifically, each year, administration develops budget principles inside of that that we use as we go through our decision-making process. And they're listed in the report, and just to quickly refresh those, this year, the four principles that were front and center for administration as we worked through the budget process were understanding and delivering on service-level expectations, fiscal responsibility, an improved public interface, and preparing for an intentional future. All the work that we've done so far has led us to this point where, first, I'll reference the capital budget. Again, there's additional detail included in the report. Here is an overview of the five-year capital plan. We can see that the total investment in two thousand and twenty-four is just shy of twenty-seven million dollars, with the majority of that taking place within our utilities. The pie chart below gives us an overview of where the funding is coming for those with the major contributions being from our reserves as well as from grants. In operations, this is a consolidated budget summary that just gives a broad overview of the expenditures, revenues and expenditures on the operational side. Again, I won't spend too much time on this piece. The adjusted revenue requirement, which is after we've accounted for revenues and expenses, what remains is what we're required to generate through taxation. And this outlines the difference between the two thousand and twenty-three taxation rate and the two thousand and twenty-four. As discussed following deliberations, there was two adjustments approved through that process by council, which included small addition of funding to support security around the station and the transit activities there, as well as ensuring that we built capacity within our fire services by the addition of four full-time fire service staff. Underneath, you will see here how we achieved the objectives based on council's direction, where we had originally proposed a three-point-four, five percent taxation adjustment. With the additions, that pushed us to just over four and a half. Council's direction was that that was not a satisfactory outcome. Administration was able to go back and do a little bit of additional work. Noted here, funding for the affordable housing project to come from reserves rather than from taxation, as well as after we were able to review the expected investment revenue we generated, we were comfortable noting that we expect to receive two-hundred thousand dollars more there. Accounting for those, the end result of that is an expected three-point-six-three taxation adjustment. So that's the big picture of that outcome. Now, we always like to try to show what that would mean to the average resident of our community. So this, again, reflects the average assessed value of residential property in our community is just over five-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. And then we see here that the total annual change from two thousand and twenty-three to twenty-four, excuse me, two thousand and twenty-four is just under two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars or just about eighteen-fifty a month. And that's made up of the adjustments proposed to taxation at just over eight dollars and then associated utility changes, rate changes as part of that. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And like I said, would like to leave this conversation with a comfort level that we would receive support for this budget, should we bring it forward next week.
Thank you, Mr. Derikott, for your presentation. Council, any questions? Councillor Wilson?
Thank you. I can, excuse me, I can just echo my comments from the end of the budget deliberations, and that's that I was pleased where we got to with the budget. I was happy with the initial proposed budget. I thought it was a quite financially responsible budget as a whole and was pleased to support where we got to in the end with, I don't have it in front of me, but the three and change percentage increase. And finally, just to say that I look forward to meeting with Council- And finally, just to say that I look forward to meeting with Councilor Fedeko and the mayor and our budget task force in January, just to clean up where we think this budget document can be improved, because I think there's still quite a bit of room for improvement. But the overall budget, I'm satisfied with and happy to see it come forward at our next council meeting.
Thank you, Councilor Wilson. Councilor Reed?
Thank you. I think one of the big changes for me over this, with this budget, was the pre-budget public engagement and the resulting budget that, that administration brought forward. I thought that was an exceptionally progressive step forward over last year's. I think the resulting budget demonstrates just how effective and efficient our administration is in terms of bringing things forward to us. And I appreciated that this budget was not built on the backs of our regular staff, or non-unionized staff, and that the critical additional positions that we need now are not being postponed. So I think this is a physically responsible budget, and I'm, I'm looking forward and grateful to be able to support it.
Councilor Fedeko?
Thank you. I, I won't be supporting the budget. I think I made my comments very clear at the last meeting. I have a lot of questions that I asked. I don't think that they've been answered. I've had a lot of community members ask me the same questions, which I have difficulty being able to answer. And like I said before, I wasn't willing to go any higher than 3.45. I'm, I'm happy that you brought it down to at least 3.63, but it's still not where I want it to be. And the fact that I think that I've just had so many questions, I've asked for different things to be showcased to me, or different possibilities that we could consider as council, and they just haven't been brought forward. So with that, I can't support it.
Councilor Nagel?
Yeah, I similarly won't be supporting this budget. I don't think, I wouldn't give it, if I were to grade it, I wouldn't give it an F. I wouldn't say it's an absolutely terrible budget. I would say it's pretty good. But I came into this budget deliberation with pretty high expectations of what I wanted us to deliver on, particularly in terms of fiscal prudence. And I feel that we have not exhausted every opportunity to get the tax rate even lower. And my preferred option would be that administration gives us additional options to reduce the taxes further. I know that since those options didn't come forward, I did propose something myself, which is that large capital project, which I would see removed from the budget and then adjust our operational contributions by similar amounts, if not the same amount, which would bring the taxes down substantially. I am not suggesting we go away and do this today. I'm just repeating myself for the purpose of this meeting, since it's before us here again today. I understand that a majority of council has expressed that they're going to be supporting it, so I don't expect any further changes from administration. I just wanted to clarify where I'm at, since I feel that's why we're discussing it right now.
Absolutely, Councilor Nagel. That's the whole purpose of this evening's agenda item, so. And to wrap up, I'll be supporting the budget for many of the reasons that Councilor Wilson has already outlined. And I think I'll share the rest of my reasons at the 11th meeting, when I think this is due to come back next week for official ratification.
Thank, thank you very much, and I appreciate, you know, the positions that have been shared, both for and against, that are consistent with the conversations that we've had throughout the process. And it will be administration's intention to bring this forward for consideration next meeting.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Derikott. That is five A. Five B, Envision Cochrane 2050. The way the time is flying by, I would suggest that we get on this plan. It's going to be here before we know it.
Fantastic. Good. Good evening, Mayor Jinong and members of council. I'm pleased to join you this evening with members of Community Growth Planning Services Team and consultants from O2 and Urban Systems to provide an update on next steps on Envision Cochrane 2050 and the growth study. At the November 6, 2023 Committee of the Whole, Envision Cochrane 2050 presented results of the first phase of public engagement in the What We Heard Report. Over the past month, the project team has applied the results of the first round of engagement, including additional engagement from other interest holder groups, such as administration on municipal need, to develop draft vision statements and policy scenarios in four key areas for discussion. The draft vision statements and policy scenarios were then shared with Cochrane Planning Commission and Senior Leadership Team for feedback and discussion before being brought forward to you today. The purpose of our presentation is to provide a project overview and share these draft vision and policy scenarios with you for your consideration prior to next week's regular meeting of council, in order to provide you with an opportunity to consider, discuss, digest, and think on these alternatives before we return next week for a deeper discussion, feedback in any direction you are comfortable providing at that time. The feedback we received will be used to guide draft policy development in the Envision Cochrane 2050 Municipal Development Plan for these and related sections, as well as future phases of engagement, to identify areas where additional clarity may be valuable and necessary. While we are always happy to receive feedback and engage in discussion, our intent at today's meeting is to provide information for your review and consideration to inform deeper dialogue and discussion at next week's meeting, that will be used to inform direction on Envision Cochrane 2050 as the project continues to progress. In parallel to our first round of engagement on Envision Cochrane 2050, the planning services team, along with our consultants, continued to advance the growth study project intended to inform Envision Cochrane 2050. Once O2 completes their presentation on Envision Cochrane 2050, there will be an opportunity for questions before John Paul Boff, manager of Planning Services, introduces our consultants from Urban Systems for an update on the growth study and presentation of current results. As mentioned, our intent for today is to provide you with the information and time you need to inform a deeper discussion at next week's meeting. We will be looking for direction to inform our next phase of engagement and commencement of our work on draft policy. That being said, you may wish to hold on to some of your questions and comments for next week or after the presentation, as many of your questions may be answered in the growth study presentation that will follow Envision Cochrane 2050. We're not planning to ask for a formal vote on preferred scenarios, rather solicit feedback and direction to inform next steps for engagement and draft policy development. So as able to guide you through the project update, draft vision statements and policy scenarios in four key areas, I would ask that you consider the following for next week's meeting. Is the policy scenario a vision that clearly resonates with you above others? Similarly, are the scenarios that you don't believe reflect the 25 to 50-year vision of Cochraneites and aren't worth exploring further? Or potentially, do you like none? Were all the scenarios in a specific area and want us to combine or develop new policy scenarios? As we embark on this journey of building and defining Envision Cochrane 2050 Municipal Development Plan together, I would encourage you to keep front of mind that there will be multiple additional opportunities to provide feedback and direction as the beginning of our work to draft, discuss, refine, and round this stone that will shape the Cochrane, how Cochrane develops over the next 25 to 50 years. And I'll hand it over to Rachel Dillon and her partner from O2, who will walk you through an update on Envision Cochrane 2050, as well as draft vision and policy scenarios we have brought for your consideration today. Rachel?
Mark, just before maybe you leave the podium, you've just wanted to clarify. So tonight, you want, you're going to walk us through the document, but the real purpose is to get clarity on, on what you're asking for us for next meeting?
Absolutely. So I think you'll find through the chair, Mayor Jinong, that there's quite a bit of content that we're sharing with you today, both in combination with Envision Cochrane 2050 and the growth study. And we wanted to set this up in a way that provides you sufficient time to really digest and internalize the information that you hear. It's not that we're not willing to answer questions or engage in dialogue today as well, but I wanted to preempt this to let you know that this, we'll be back in a week and there'll be another opportunity. So don't feel like you need to exhaust, exhaust all of your concerns, or that if something's missed, that we'll be going forward without that direction. So I think with a couple of vacancies here today, we'll be able to then accommodate their, their direction and insight as well.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Good evening. Sorry, I'm just going to make a fullscreen. There, perfect. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to share some initial policy scenarios for your discussion and insight, and we look forward to chatting about that further next Monday. So tonight, I'll provide a bit of a refresh on our previous touchpoints, as well as the timetable and where we are in the project. And then I'll also provide a quick overview of the second phase of engagement, which will be occurring in early 2024. And then we have three vision options for you to consider and discuss, and we could discuss further next week as well. And we also have four policy scenarios, one on growth, land use, mobility, and housing. And I'm here with my colleague Sean Small, who's my fellow senior planner at O2, and he will be walking you through those policy scenarios tonight. So just a bit of a recap, in the summer, we, we spoke to you about the project and the first phase of engagement. And we also heard that it was very important to bring council in at the very beginning of the project before we put pen to paper, to get your insight and learn from your experience to help set direction early on in the project before we start drafting the plan. So that's part of the purpose of why we're here tonight. We then engaged with the public for the first phase of engagement from September 5th to October 4th, with the What We Heard Report from, completed in mid-October. And then, as you'll remember, just a month ago, we discussed What We Heard during that engagement and had a chat about the success and the engagement tactics. And then here we are tonight to talk about some policy scenarios. So like I mentioned, we'll present three potential visions for Envision Cochrane 2050, and three policy scenarios for growth, land use, mobility, and housing. And the regular meeting next week is for you to discuss and provide direction on the vision and policy scenarios. Like I mentioned in the note here, we want you to, we're presenting a lot of content tonight and a lot of context for each of them. So think about them over the next week, and then we could discuss next week if you want to pick a preferred scenario, or blend some together, or suggest something different. We're really looking for your, for your insight and discussion to help us narrow our focus moving forward. And this will also help us craft engagement questions to take the discussion to the next level with the public as well. So we're here in the calendar, just at the early December, doing the draft policy scenarios, and we'll be working towards a Phase Two engagement in mid-February. And afterwards, then we'll really focus on drafting the plan and taking all the direction that you and the public and administration have provided us, to work to a Phase Three public engagement, where the public will see the completed document in June, July, then we'll finalize it and work through the approval process afterwards. So just a few highlights from last meeting. We talked about how do we gauge success of a public engagement and reflected on our experience with the first phase. A couple additional notes here is we did have 100% reach, because we sent a notification along with the utility bills for all the households in Cochrane, and the website received 2,000 visits. And we supplemented that with additional signs and posters and print and digital ads and social media as well. So about 600 people participated, which is about 1.6% of the population. And we received a question last time about where we get our benchmark at about a 1% participation rate. And this is really from our experience at O2, having worked on various similar projects across the country with similar-sized populations, and most recently, Charlottetown on their official plan. We also provided the range of engagement opportunities. It's important for people to know what's going on, of course, but then it's also to provide a range of opportunities that work for people with different time availability, knowledge, interest, comfort levels. So we had opportunities that people could participate in quickly, like lobby displays, quick online and sounding board engagement. We also had more in-depth engagement opportunities in the in-person and online surveys. And then it was scattered place-based throughout the community, as well as online and in-person. So the real important thing that we want to stress is that people were aware of the project and had a range of opportunities to participate if they wanted to. So the major insights we received from this engagement is for the vision is about controlled growth that protects the natural heritage and matches the scale and feel of a walkable town. For identity, like I stressed at the previous meeting, the natural context of Cochrane and its beautiful topography really stood out across multiple subject areas. And people really appreciated the ability to interact with nature, and the beautiful vistas is really what makes the community unique. For livability, it's about implementing infrastructure improvements in advance of growth. For economic vitality, supporting local businesses in the downtown and permitting local commercial spaces in the neighborhoods. And for open spaces and natural areas, really focusing on protecting nature and green spaces through preservation, education, and regulations. And for connectivity, it really focused on mobility choice. Residents want to rely on their personal vehicles less and desire improvements in other modes like transit and cycling. So looking ahead to Phase Two, we're really going to work with a lot of the communications materials that worked well for Phase One. Of course, we'll still have the website and the social media posts, digital advertising, utility bill inserts were wonderful, as well as some print ads. For posters, we're going to distribute them like we did last time, but then we noticed that we did got under-representation of single-person households, and we think there's a real opportunity to connect with apartment managers and see if we can install posters and installations in those buildings as well. And then outdoor signage again. For the tactics, we'll do the online survey again, of course. The lobby displays in particular were particularly successful last time. And we think there's an opportunity to approach maybe businesses and apartments to extend that approach, and also explore approaching businesses with a point-of-sale display with a QR code to help promote the project even further. And then having the in-person opportunities as well. Pop-ins at the SLS Center or the Station Library and Ranch House. Unfortunately, we're in the cold months, so we can't do an outdoor one, but we'll look for creative indoor opportunities. And then do a specific outreach to schools, as well as follow up with community organizations, the ones that we contacted before, but that also the last meeting, there was some additional suggestions. So any other suggestions, we, we'd love to hear them of who we need to connect with. So transitioning into the goal options, so we will present those three scenarios for each. I'll present the three vision options, and my colleague Sean will present the growth, mobility, and land use and housing options. And why these topics in particular is that, as you all know, they're the key building blocks of a community, how it's growing, where does it accommodate growth, what does the mobility networks look like and facilitate people to use their community, where do we concentrate a mix of uses and an intensification? And then how do we address housing and fulfill the housing needs of a diverse community? And then the vision discussion will inform other topics for Phase Two engagement and further council discussions in the new year. So we're discussing with you these four topics today, and then your feedback will help us refine and craft the public engagement questions for Phase Two. And then after that, we could start putting pen to paper and really writing, writing and crafting policy direction. For the other topics, like arts and culture, parks and rec, economic development and design, we'll publicly engage on those goals and priorities and understand where people see the most value in each of those areas, and then come back to you as well to discuss and provide insight on policy scenarios for those, and then write those policies. So you've seen this diagram a few times, that there's multiple different inputs into Envision 2050, and then that document as the, the broad strategic document for the community then informs a bunch of subject area plans. And it's really informed by public feedback, council direction, and administration needs. So we finished Phase One, which is all about vision and values, and let's really craft an ambition for the community. And Phase Two is like taking all of the things that we want and starting to prioritize, because we can't do everything. So where do we need to really focus our efforts? And then the Phase Three is really focusing on the plan itself. So going into vision, the first step, which we've done, is we engaged with the public specifically on their vision for the community. And then we've also talked to Cochrane Planning Commission as well, and helped us work through the vision. Step two, there is internal engagement, the presentation to SLT on November 26th. And then the vision statements have been undergoing in evolution and drafting, and there's still further evolution to go. So we're really excited to hear your feedback on those, which is step three, council engagement to inform the vision and further refinements there. And from that point, we'll incorporate the direction, iterate as needed, and submit for approval. So here's your first three scenarios for the vision. And as you can see, it's divided into two components. There's the very long-term, 50-year aspirational vision, and then there's a shorter 25-year, which is really focused on actions to get us to that longer ambition. So the first one is a community of choice for a high quality of life and an active lifestyle that Cochrane will become a beacon for those who choose an active lifestyle that is connected with nature. And then to do this, it involves prioritizing a range of parks and natural areas, allowing people to grow up and age within the community, and health and wellness investment. And it's really focusing on maintaining a high standard of living for all Cochraneites. For the second one, it's an innovation and economic hub for Cochrane to become a thriving, innovative employment center and place of commerce, which would involve prioritizing supporting our local businesses, as well as attracting new industries like tech and research and development. We already know tech has quite a strong presence locally, too, and institutions. And this focuses on regional connectivity, tourism, and talent attraction. And then talent and traction is particularly tied to quality of life. And then the last one is a sustainable community connected with nature. In 50 years, Cochrane is living in harmony with its stunning topography and healthy natural environment. And in 25 years, how do we do that? We prioritize securing and preserving land for parks and natural areas, having sustainable community development and building practices, and offering mobility choice. And then this focuses on a healthy environment and access to nature, as well as opportunities, amenities, and services within easy reach of residents. So this will be the question for December 11th. Do you prefer any of these options, or a combination of them, or none of them? We'd like to hear all your thoughts on that. And I'll now pass it over to my colleague Sean to walk you through the other. And I'll now pass it over to my colleague Sean to walk you through the other four.
Thank you. So I'll now walk through the policy scenarios for council's consideration, beginning with So each policy scenario has been rated out of three using a triple bottom line approach that includes social, environmental and economic considerations. Each scenario has been rated out of three based on what was heard as well during the Phase One engagement. Most of the scenarios are interconnected and thus many of the same insights will apply across topics. And all scenarios have pros and cons associated with them, in which case, again, you may decide you like parts of one, parts of another and want them combined, or you may decide you like none of them. And the intent is to provide a high-level assessment to inform your discussion that'll continue tonight and then next week as well. We've also then applied the strategic plan lens to each of these topics. And so, beginning with growth, the following items have been pulled out of the strategic plan. And so council's already highlighted that planning for the future needs of our growing community is important, investing in communities' current and future services and infrastructure needs, new development must reinforce and improve upon the quality of life, and then raising the bar for development in Cochrane. During engagement, some of the key themes heard was slowing or controlling growth until infrastructure and services can support new residents, maintaining a small-town feel by limiting expansion, preventing sprawl. And also, we heard Cochrane is becoming a city and is too big. So throughout the scenarios, we're also highlighting then the current policy context for Cochrane and then the current state as well. And so the current policy context in Cochrane is the downtown has provided, has been prioritized as the commercial and economic hub. And then with the idea that there's supported limited commercial outside of the downtown as well. And then the current state, as we all know, is Cochrane is mainly low-density. It also has beautiful topography, however, that topography creates challenges for mobility, land use and servicing. With each of these scenarios, there's different items to consider as we go through and think about the different options. So as far as growth, some of the considerations for growth have to do with economic development, supporting local businesses, complete communities, regional collaboration, reducing infrastructure costs, supporting different mobility options, as well as housing choice. The three growth scenarios put before you is number one, completing the planned growth within Cochrane's existing footprint. So what this means is building out the planned communities that are already planned today, building out any brownfield redevelopment, so infill, as well as then being responsive with infrastructure investment in those areas. As far as ratings from a triple bottom line, we rated that a one out of three with the couple of points here is consumes less land, it limits housing choice, it also then ignores potentially that growth could be happening outside of Cochrane. And as the population in the Calgary and surrounding areas, also then there will be additional growth pressures that won't go away. From a public standpoint, we rated it as a one out of three. And again, based on some of the public's comments, that there are challenges with this particular style of growth. Scenario number two is focusing growth on intensification. And so what this means is building out all the planned communities, similar brownfield redevelopment, however, focusing a lot more intensification within existing areas such as the new downtown or other areas that you would perceive as underdeveloped. With this approach, then, there's also being more proactive with infrastructure investment to support and encourage additional intensification. So from a triple bottom line standpoint, rated this one as a two out of three. And so, again, consumes less land and the fact that you're within the boundaries still, it's more efficient use of infrastructure if you're allowing a bit more intensification. There's also a little bit more housing diversity with option two than option one. And therefore, with what we heard, rated that as a two out of three. Option number three is allowing growth through intensification as well as possible expansion beyond Cochrane's existing boundaries. And so what that means is building out planned new communities, again, intensification where it makes sense with redevelopment or underdeveloped sites, focusing intensification within the new downtown and other focus areas. However, for Cochrane to still offer perhaps that additional suburban lifestyle, then that may also require expanding the existing boundaries, which will require collaboration with Rocky View County. The other option that this provides is also perhaps having proactive infrastructure investment for both intensification and expansion. So not only would expansion potentially allow more residential communities, but perhaps more employment lands as well. This was also rated a two out of three from a triple bottom line standpoint. It does expand the boundaries, however, we see this as adding even more housing options across the board and also has the highest accommodation for all types of growth within the town. So the question on this one then is, what is your growth policy goal? So again, doesn't have to be one or the other, it might be bits and pieces. So number one is completing the planned growth within Cochrane's existing footprint. Two is focusing growth on intensification. And three is growth through intensification as well as possible expansion. Now I'll move on to land use. So again, pulling some of council's direction from the strategic plan, planning for future needs of our growing community, making sure that new development, again, is improving upon the quality of life. Cochrane is a complete community and so it provides everything for residents, businesses, as well as visitors to live, work and thrive. Revitalizing commercial and industrial spaces that need it, as well as then creating a vibrant and active community within connected neighborhoods. So in this case, what we heard was Cochrane is a destination community and great place to live. Some people wanted the historic downtown to be protected. We heard comments on improving housing affordability and living costs. Some people wanted more neighborhood amenities or shopping options within their local community, as well as then supporting local businesses and encouraging new businesses as well. So the current policy context in Cochrane for this topic is already striving for efficient land use policies and servicing. Also, the current direction is favoring intensification in central Cochrane versus newer subdivisions. So again, both occur, however, looking towards that intensification component, as well as then endorsing complete communities where residents have amenities nearby. The current state, Cochrane obviously does have some choice in housing where there are mid-rise apartments scattered throughout the community. The downtown is seen as the regional and commercial focus and smaller neighborhood commercial nodes are allowed and exist within some of the newer communities. So some of the considerations for the land use and intensification topic are looking at natural feature protection, economic feasibility, complete communities, having density that will support mobility choices or options, having density that will support businesses and other amenities, and then utilizing existing infrastructure and servicing. So the first scenario for land use is focusing density downtown with smaller neighborhood community nodes, so actively discouraging density elsewhere. In this would be protecting the old downtown but focusing growth in the new downtown, maintaining lower-density suburbs, and then having smaller-scale mixed-use neighborhood nodes. So this one, we rated it as a one out of three from a triple bottom line. This limits the scale of neighborhood nodes. It also then is more limiting on the housing supply. From what we heard, again, we heard many comments highlighting the issues of the existing growth pattern or some of the requests for additional amenities. And so we rated this as a one out of three as well. Scenario two is focusing density downtown as well as along major corridors and in larger neighborhood nodes. And so this is dispersing the density, so that way there's a more connected pattern. It allows greater densification along corridors. It's still protecting the old downtown, focusing growth in the new downtown. However, you would see larger and denser mixed-use neighborhood nodes throughout Cochrane, as well as it would start to split the housing choice into a greater variety of options. This one here, we rated as a three out of three for triple bottom line. This maintains compact development. It allows density to support more neighborhood amenities, as well as improves housing supply. From what we heard, we rated that as a two out of three. Scenario three here is focusing density downtown, however, and in planned large nodes. And so in this case, density is solely concentrated on only select areas within the town. So this one here would again protect old downtown but focus growth in new downtown, which as you can see is a common theme that we've heard from people, and so we've included that across all three scenarios. And then identifying a location for new dense mixed-use centers, other than just the downtown. This one here, we rated as a two out of three. And so there are some challenges and some downsides from this one as well, whereas one or two compact areas are where you concentrate uses and density. So that can be also be limiting amenities in certain areas. It also doesn't increase then other amenities, local business opportunities within neighborhoods. From a what we heard standpoint, we rated that as a two out of three as well. So the question for this one is, what is your preferred land use or intensification policy goal? So either focus density downtown with smaller neighborhood community nodes, discouraging density elsewhere, focusing density downtown along major corridors and in larger neighborhood nodes, so dispersing the density a little bit more, or focusing density downtown and in planned large nodes. So again, sort of minimal density elsewhere where it's been focused in only a few spots. The next one is mobility. So in the strategic plan, it's highlighted that Cochrane is committed to bringing people together physically and socially, that the community connectivity is supported by crossroads of two provincial highways, growing local road network, commitment to developing and maintaining a comprehensive pathway network as well. Walking, biking, scootering, transit are supported. What we heard during engagement was connecting communities through continuous multi-use pathways was people wanted more of that. Some wanted set transit routes and schedules and also wanted to advocate for regional trains or transit connections to the region. Others wanted to require multiple subdivision access points, so to make sure that, again, increase connectivity. And then others wanted to see more grade-separated rail crossings in town. Currently, current policy does prioritize investments in vehicular transportation. It does endorse expanding and enhancing though, transportation choice, which includes active mobility. It also looks at regional connection opportunities and initiatives, and so regional pathway connections, SWIFT and others. The current state is Cochrane's pathways have a 94% approval rating. Obviously, again, as mentioned, the topography and road layout impact transit efficiency and not every community has pathway connections to the broader community. And so again, some of the neighborhoods are more isolated than others from that standpoint. Considerations for mobility are looking at and thinking about regional connections, mobility choice, how mobility interacts with land use, looking at pathway and trail network connections, thinking about, again, from a mobility standpoint, social isolation and accessibility issues, as well as then improving services and facilities by increasing users' accessibility to those So the first scenario under mobility choice is continuing to prioritize vehicle movement. So that would be then looking at Highway 22, advocating for expansion, maintaining by and large the current road network, looking at recreational pathway network improvements, and then continuing with the on-demand transit system, focusing on when people depend on transit, they'll have challenges by having it through only an on-demand system. This one, we rated as a one out of three from a triple bottom line. There's limited mobility choice compared to the other options. It promotes driving. There's also infrastructure challenges with maintaining this high of a mobility split. And then from a what we heard, this one, we rated as a 0.5 out of three because didn't matter what people, what side of the fence they were on, almost everyone still indicated they wished they had mobility choice to get around either walking pathways, either transit or vehicles. Scenario two here is looking at improving the viability of active transportation and transit alongside vehicle movement. So again, this still looks at Highway 22 expansion. The existing road network will not change that much, looking at direct active transportation connections between communities and the downtown. This one here then transitions over to scheduled bus routes with some on-demand service and then having transit commuting focus between different connection points. From a triple bottom line here, we rated this one as a two out of three. This one offers more mobility choice. There's less reliance on cars, not to say we're eliminating cars, but people have more choice. However, as always, there's still gonna be topography and road layout challenges implementing this. And then from a what we heard, we rated this as a two out of three. Scenario three was looking at maximizing mobility choice. And so again, similar road connectivity components as far as Highway 22, advocating for expansion. However, this is taking the existing road network and looking at opportunities where road connectivity could occur, keeping in mind, one of the pieces here is obviously that will then add cost as you start to add those connections as underpasses or river crossings or those types of things. Looking at community design to make sure that we're optimizing connectivity, making those additional connections between the pathway and trail system, as well as transit, having direct active transportation connections between communities, so not just necessarily communities and the downtown, but across communities, having innovative transit choices and then looking at transit focus on helping people meet their daily needs for those that, for whatever reason, vehicles are not necessarily a good option. For this one here, we rated this one as a two out of three from a triple bottom line. It does improve mobility choice, however, it does have that highest infrastructure expense. Uh it does improve mobility choice, however, it does have that highest infrastructure expense. Uh there is again less reliance on cars than option one. And still you have topography and connectivity challenges. From a what we heard, uh based on again, from what we heard on having options, we rated this one as a three out of three. So the question to consider for this one is what is your preferred mobility policy goal? Uh either continue to prioritize vehicle movement. Improve the viability of active transportation and transit alongside vehicle movement. Or maximize mobility choice. And again, not necessarily one or the other, it could be a combination of these. Now I'll move on to our housing topic. So from the strategic plan, uh states those who choose to make Cochran home will be supported with a variety of housing options. Uh we welcome new neighbors, uh as well as new neighborhoods and ensuring there is a home for everyone. So what we heard is some wanted to keep Cochran small and compact, so some want less density, less sprawl. Uh some want more compact housing, uh not necessarily those that want less density or less sprawl. Uh some people want to enable a greater mix and diversity of housing choice to allow for. Uh more options for older and younger generations uh to remain in Cochran or attract people to live in Cochran. And then uh again, most people uh mentioned improving housing affordability. So Cochran's current policy does uh encourage a diversity of housing throughout the community. Um and one of those options is secondary suites are permitted. Uh the current state is, I mean Cochran is still largely uh single detached housing remains the dominant form. Uh and growth is exacerbating a constrained housing supply. Uh and by that we mean um with only a large um one choice of housing. Then housing costs uh for that housing type will go up. Uh and there are limited options for other housing choices. Housing considerations uh are considering non-market housing. Uh and so as well as aging in place uh and growing up in the community. So again, a variety of housing types uh that can be adapted throughout uh person's stage in life. Looking at uh gentle density, uh and so that is uh again, secondary suites is one of those options. But also looking at different building forms. Uh looking at a range of housing options or choice, uh density to support businesses. Uh having uh choice again to allow for additional talent attraction. Uh these are all different considerations uh as you consider then uh housing policy direction. Sure, three housing choice or scenarios are, uh the first one being minimal housing diversity. So this is where predominantly single-family homes. Uh there's opportunities for density in this form of basement suites, garden suites, et cetera. Uh lower density focus and so townhomes, semi-detached duplexes rather than larger apartment buildings. Uh with some targeted apartment opportunities. Uh this one, we rate it as one out of three from a triple bottom line perspective. Uh this limits housing choice and supply impacting affordability. Uh it's more land intensive uh for the number of units. Uh and then it's also can be limiting for some age-in-place opportunities. From a what we heard, uh we rated this one as a two out of three. Scenario two is focusing housing diversity on low and moderate density options. And so here we're looking at having single-family, uh other lower density forms. Uh such as maybe townhomes or lower-rise apartments or even. Other built form options where you can fit in multiple units. Uh then also looking at increasing apartment opportunities within the neighborhoods. So this one here, from a triple bottom line, we rated that one as a two out of three. Uh it does allow more housing choice and affordability by having multiple options at different price points. Uh it does allow for a more compact community than option one. Uh has the potential to allow for more age-in-place opportunities. And again, has the potential to allow for more talent attraction. From a what we heard, uh we rated this one as a two out of three. Scenario three is uh having the maximum housing diversity. So this is allowing a range of housing types to be uh allowed broadly throughout the town. Um where obviously site context will still come into play, however. Uh market demand will determine location more so. Uh single-family and lower-density options would be still available throughout. Uh there would be increased opportunities for low-rise apartment opportunities throughout Cochran. And then there would also start to see a higher density or higher rise building forms as well as higher-rise apartments. In strategic locations. Uh this one from a triple bottom line, rated this one as a three out of three. Again, it's starting to add even more options uh than scenario two. And then from a what we heard, we rated this one as a two out of three. As you can see, uh from a what we heard perspective, we rated all of these options as a two out of three. Given that we heard a variety of comments um where uh there's. Pros and cons to each one of these from a public standpoint, and so we rated them equally in that sense. So the question on housing is what is your preferred housing policy goal? So is it maintaining minimal housing diversity, focusing housing diversity on low and moderate density options? Or going to allowing maximum housing diversity? So just a recap here, I won't read them all. Uh however, for uh if there's any questions of clarification, but for December eleventh. Uh these are the different questions uh that we're looking to have uh some direction uh provided. Uh so the first one is what is your preferred vision? Uh what is your growth policy goal? What is your preferred land use intensification policy goal? What is your preferred mobility policy goal? And what is your preferred housing policy goal? And it should be noted, uh we- there is hard copies uh of that page for you, uh if you haven't. And so um we thank you, and uh if you have any questions immediately of clarification. We can take those.
All right, thank you. That was a lot of information, but I don't know how else you could distill it down any better. Um and my only comment uh so far, I'm see if there's a lot of lights on, but I really appreciate the format. Multiple choice with the options of uh combining all of the choices. Very uh easy way to navigate through this, so thank you for that. Uh councillor Reed, you're up first.
Yeah, thank you. Uh the mayor's right, it was a lot of information. I had two questions. One was in the questions about uh what you heard. Was that presented in the context of a twenty-five-year and fifty-year um scenario?
Uh that's a good question, and we didn't. Each of those three scenarios generally reflected a facet of what we heard, uh but we didn't grade the the visions.
And then um under the 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 vision, I was trying to get my head around. Uh what the definition is of a sustainable community by by what you're using and the other definition I was wondering about. And again, I don't need it for tonight, maybe uh for the eleventh, but. Um the other one under vision was a high quality of life. How do you define that? Or how would we define that if we were to, if that were to be our choice of vision, so. Uh what's the definition of sustainable community and what's the definition of a high quality of life and active lifestyle? Like what is, what are those definitions? But other than that, thank you.
Okay.
Well, thank you for that. I'll take that away and we'll come back with more flesh on December eleventh for that. Thanks.
Councillor Deacon.
Uh thanks for the information. I was just curious, did did we ever get the the what you heard kind of results? Or I know that you've summarized, like done a like a summary, but is it something that we can actually receive? Some of those comments within the next week to kind of look over as well from the public?
Sure, absolutely. I will follow up with administration and see how we can circulate that, but absolutely.
Yeah, I think even if it could be broken down, obviously, you know, I mean, you've you've had a lot of people give you some. Some scenarios that they like to see, so don't expect maybe like a full, you know, six hundred page document of what six hundred people had said, but just curious. And then my only other question was, um when you said that you we can kind of combine things. Are you really looking um from council, like an idea of like? I kind of see the guy, I would have my own points of view of like what I'd like to see maybe in like a ten-year, like a really short term. Building up to like twenty-five year and then say to thirty-five to fifty year, because I think that. Within the short term, it's like kind of like where we're wanting to grow within the next little bit, but then. Looking at it from a from a further distance out to a really long distance out, which I think would change how I'd like to view. Some of those options, and I don't know if that's kind of what you're looking for from council, or are you looking for more just a general blanketed kind of concept?
I think that's a really excellent question, and um typically municipal development plans such as this are quite long-term. Uh and they set an aspiration for the community, so it's thinking a decade, multiple decades out into the future. However, I don't want to lose any immediate actions that you think are really important in the short term. Because we like to put in our plans uh an implementation section where. Administration can start to take action immediately on some potentially quick wins or things that need to be done in the near term. So I would encourage you to do both if that's not asking too much.
No, thank you. I think that'll help me kind of form some thoughts as we go through this next week.
Great.
Thank you.
Sorry, through the chair, councillor Deacon, again, just to kind of add additional clarity as an example, I think. You saw with um some of our focus on where we grow and then through housing, sort of how we grow. And we really don't want to limit your feedback, any sort of direction or concepts or preferences that you have. This is the time we really want to hear it, and it'll help us early on to refine us as we move closer towards that target. But as an example, using your housing typologies and and looking at where we grow, uh and where we want to focus density. There might be feedback around, I like this type here, I like that type there. This is all valuable information that'll help us shape how we define uh the plan, but as uh Rachel just mentioned as well, it is helpful. Uh we are trying to focus on that twenty-five to fifty-year horizon, of course, trying to get there as soon as we can, but thinking of as we redevelop.
If I could just follow up, the what we heard report was attached to the November sixth committee of the whole report to council.
So no need to follow up, we got it. Uh councillor Nagel.
As others others have mentioned, I really appreciate this format of having what feels like some pretty tangible options uh for discussion point that we can make. Clear decisions, uh so good job on the format. I have some questions about a couple of things. Um on the growth section, if, did I understand the public engagement results correct? That overwhelmingly you were hearing from the community that people do not want uh Cochran to become a city or grow more?
I could jump in on that. Um so that growth question was. I'd say the vast majority of people referred to small-town feel for people that we heard from. And then there was a lot of concerns about growth, and we heard a range of opinions that. To from to stop it completely, to slow it down, to be more thoughtful about it, and then some, a lot of people, it's still in the minority of opinions, but. Um there was a substantial section of comments that acknowledged that Cochran is becoming a city. And that maybe we need to take a different approach to growth that reflects that. So I wouldn't say it was all anchored in one direction, there was some, some split in there.
Based on, like, this is kind of anecdotally, I don't have empirical evidence like you guys do, but I do feel that a lot of residents. Don't want Cochran to grow super quickly and urbanize as quickly as possible. I'm a little worried that the options we're presented with in this do not really reflect that fact. Um because I feel that option one, which is complete the planned growth within Cochran's existing footprint. That's kind of like the do-nothing option, which I don't think council's going to land on. But then options two and three, both just assume intensification. And I'm I'm wondering if for discussion for December eleventh, if we're missing a fourth option, which is kind of uh one plus more. So it's like com- complete the Cochran that's currently planned, but then also look for opportunities with Rocky View. To expand the current iteration of what Cochran is, which is kind of, do you get what I'm saying? I think.
Yeah.
Like an option four, that that doesn't presuppose a whole bunch of intensification within our existing borders.
For sure, and absolutely. Um if none of the options are landing, absolutely suggest a fourth option for sure for discussion.
Okay, and then my semi, semi-related point um is on the housing choice. Option three, the maximum housing diversity, uh on the face of it, that's really appealing to me. But my concern, um it's not with you three individually or just my general experience as a town councillor. I I feel that the words maximum diversity should mean like maximum diversity in every direction, but I've I've always felt that it secretly means just more density. Um so I would like to see maximum di- uh di- diversity in the form of. Low-rise apartments, mid-rise apartments, as you mentioned, but also stuff that's lower density than we currently are building in Cochran, for example, bungalows. A country residential, um can you speak to that as to whether that's that's the intention?
So similar to your growth comment, um on the density and housing choice. There are different ways that that can be applied, and so any direction uh that you want to give on how those. Uh can be interpreted, so maximum housing choice could be absolutely just pure increased density. It could also just mean um there should be different housing options within every community instead of. Say concentrating one high-density area. So I would say there's two ways or even more that that direction could go, and it's not necessarily. Just increased density, so we'd be looking for anything you'd have to suggest as well, that'd be great.
Okay, and then kind of just uh, I know we're making decisions on the eleventh, but just to provide my own position, recognizing of course. I'm only one of seven voices up here, um but I I tend towards the preference. Of finding ways to do lower density on the edge of Cochran and uh working with Rocky View, as you said, to try and expand our borders potentially. Um it to have and have lower density out there, but then increase that maximum density uh in strategic nodes. That's kind of where I where I tend towards. Um and you looked like you may want to respond to that, so you have one final question, but.
Yeah, absolutely. So through the chair, I constantly nagle, I think, just to kind of reiterate some of the processes we're trying to go through here. I think this really is kind of that rounding of the stones, as we get this feedback, it really will help us form and shape some of those policy directions to try and come up with. A municipal development plan with the policy goals and the direction scenarios that best reflect what Cochran is looking for, so. Encourage you to see it as this this dialogue and discussion, and as we take the feedback from the eleventh that we get. We'll look to craft draft statements that we're we're confident will need amendment along the way as well. But hopefully help us get closer to the right level of specificity and generic uhness as well to provide the the latitude.
Okay, and then I was wondering if you uh you folks could clarify. A bit more on the difference between points, maybe one and two under the vision section. Where it says a community of choice for high quality of life and active lifestyle versus an innovation economic hub. My understanding, or my assumption rather, uh is that number two would be really leaning into urbanization is what that really means. And number one would be kind of more embracing this um suburban lifestyle.
Yeah, and I think I think it's really interesting because, yeah, with number two is definitely the economic development business focus. With when we think about that and housing form and density. Typically, businesses need that concentration of population to to live around it, so I think that's a fair assumption that that starts to point into that direction. And that how can we have density to support our businesses? Um whereas uh vision one really reflects a lot of the public feedback on why they moved to Cochran. Which is that natural context and access to nature. So I think it's maybe a little bit less clear-cut of what that could be with form, because there could be denser communities that still have that access to nature, but. Um it's definitely a a nuance in there that you you're picking up on.
Sir, sor- sorry, and then one more follow-up on that point, I guess, to address, just to kind of hone in on what point three then would be. Um because when I think active living, I'm thinking lots of green spaces, parks, pathways, bike paths.
Yeah.
That would be, that would all fall under one, but the number three, is that kind of? The under the vision section is number three kind of number one, but with an increased focus on sustainable practices and technology. Transit, solar panels, um sustainable.
Yeah, definitely leads more into sustainability, and you'll notice in the third one too, it. It leans most heavily into mobility choice and like sustainable living patterns as well. So it has that natural protection and identity as well as, yeah, sustainable community and building development.
Okay, I know I keep on saying one more point, but as I keep on listening to you, keep on thinking of more. Uh is there anything in any of this to reflect any um potential planning for industrial zoning? Because number two sounds very commercial, white-collar. Is there anything in here about industrial zoning?
Uh there's nothing specifically in industrial zoning, but one thing that's really become apparent, particularly from our engagement, I think we spoke about it a little bit. At our last meeting, is there is a need for like a small bay light industrial form in Cochran moving forward. So thinking of how we craft policy to support that, whether within the existing footprint or if it's part of like an expansion collaboration with. thinking of how we craft policy to support that, whether within the existing footprint or if it's part of like an expansion collaboration with Rocky View County of how to provide that. I think that's definitely something that needs to be prioritized regardless. Um, but, um, it's not embedded in anything right now, but absolutely feel free to highlight it and stress it to us to, to include.
Okay. I think we should have stuff put industrial. Now I'm actually done. Sorry.
One more question. Council Wilson.
Thank you. I think there were some really good things touched on in this last conversation. Um, so my, my notes as I was listening to the presentation here, uh, I made note that I'll be referencing uh, our group Cochrane visioning document that we did last term. I thought there was some pretty broad consensus amongst the table about what we produced there and a lot of it, I would hope is guiding this process. I assume it is, including Council Nagel just talked, talked about, um, balancing, um, balancing densities between our, uh, internal center of the community and what we're doing on the outskirts. That's one of the many things in that document that I thought there was some pretty, um, uh, there was consensus and there's some good ideas in there. So, um, maybe I should pause and just, I assume you're already using that document as something that involve, is involved in this process.
Oh, yeah. A hundred percent. Yeah. We're referring to that. And as you can see also, the strategic plan is perform, uh, it's you, being used as like a guidance, guiding light and structure for us to orient a lot of our content around. So.
Excellent. I, I figured so. Um, so some other notes here, you're looking for a direction for more of our dialogue on December eleventh. So some of my thoughts as I was reading through this are, um, to no surprise to many, let's take a financial lens to the big four topics, growth, mobility, land use, housing. Um, in particular, value per acre thinking is where my mind goes, which means, um, it, it should hopefully will come from the map, mapping of our current productive and anti-productive lands from a financial contributions, community perspective lens. Um, I think that's needs to be top of mind without that consideration, we continue down our current development treadmill paradigm that continues to add to our long-term financial insolvency. Financial insolvency then removes any choice from residents and just decides your future for you essentially. So I think that's why it's so important. Um, one example is, uh, infrastructure ahead of development, the residents were requesting in the public engagement part, realistically isn't a, isn't a choice in our current, um, development treadmill paradigm. We're essentially um, entirely dependent on approving further developments to fund those things. So I think it's critical that we're having that conversation as part of this discussion. And then I was going to save my next two points here for December eleventh, but you said you're looking for uh, some directions. So maybe I should just get them out there too. Um, intensity and land use topic, I, I just wrote down that I prefer less government prescriptive and let our markets decide on that. I think thousands of individual decisions are much more wise than a prescriptive global plan there. So that would be my direction there. And then the affordable housing topic, uh, the most effective solutions are private industry in my opinion. So increasing the housing mix as we just talked about and decreasing our regulation to allow that to happen, I think are, um, would be my main priorities there. And finally, just a question that I wrote down that I don't have an answer to, which is, um, the main question, how do we maintain our identity while making big changes like this to our future? And that's just something I think we should be talking about in December eleventh. How we fit all those things together? Cause that's a difficult question to answer.
Oh, definitely. And I think you pinpointed on the big question for this whole plan is how do we maintain what people love and identify with and why they chose Cochrane while still allowing it to grow and evolve and, and move into the future. So, yeah, I, I really like that framing.
Okay, thanks. Uh, maybe give you a quick chance to touch on the financial lens too. Is that something that we're thinking about as we're engaging on all the big four topics?
Yeah, I'm, uh, I'm happy to step in on that. And that's one of the reasons why we read ass, uh, O two is they go through this to really look at a dribble bottom line lens through this to identify obviously with not all the range of alternatives and the selection of policy scenarios come with the same financial contribution. So at this point, we really, it's not, it's not specific. And I think, you know, when we look at a twenty five to fifty year plan, we can look at, you know, guideposts and, and which is kind of more or less same. Uh, but we are keeping that in consideration as we move through it. And I'm hoping as you're seeing, as we go through the, the policy options that of course, there's a really wide range of different policies, you know, as we could have come with. And we brought the, the ones that we feel were closest to what we heard in the report. Um, of course, it's always in need of refinement as we go forward.
Uh, wonderful. Uh, look forward to the December eleventh discussion around the table and, uh, I'm sure I'll have, uh, uh, opinions on every single topic by then that were on the slides. So thank, thank you for, for this.
Yeah, thank you. I don't have anything further to add than what my colleagues have already shared. Uh, look forward to the eleventh. It's been a interesting conversation. I appreciate all of the points that everyone's brought up tonight. It's gonna, I'm glad we're getting into the, the meat of the matter now and actually, uh, putting things out there in the public realm where people can see the direction of, of the inputs that they're having. So, um, yeah, it's exciting times. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, up next is the future growth study update. And just before administration comes to the podium, the length of this presentation is similar. So maybe we should take a bit of a break here and then come back. Six minutes? Thank you. We're close to going back live again. I manually turned on my microphone there. Okay. Welcome back. Thank you for indulging our break. We're into five C Cochrane growth study. Mr. Popoff.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and members of council. The next agenda item is a presentation on the growth study, which is a study that's looking at land supply, land demand, land suitability and possible pathways for growth. I like to stress that this is background information. It's foundational information and we've been using it to date to inform the MDP discussion that you just, uh, heard from O two. It is not intended to be strategy. It is intended to provide the information needed to tell the story of what the topography is, what the constraints are and what the opportunities are for growth. And so it is foundational to the MDP and to other decision-making within the municipality. Today I'd like to introduce, uh, Justin Bear. He's, uh, with Urban Systems, uh, Jennifer Comrie as well, and Chris Nelson, and they will be taking the presentation forward and presenting the information for you.
Thanks for the introduction, John. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, as John introduced, my name is Jen Comrie and I'm joined by Chris Nelson and Justin Bear from Urban Systems. Uh, and we've been working alongside the town on the growth study. Uh, and I'm particularly honored today. It's my first time presenting to Town of Cochrane Council. So thank you for having me. Uh, so to get into the, uh, update on the growth study, as John, uh, introduced as part of the introduction, we just wanted to frame out what the growth study is and, and what it isn't. And so the growth study is a document that is, uh, designed to support long-range planning. And it's, uh, designed to support council and the community to understand how Cochrane is positioned to accommodate growth into the future. And really it's an opportunity to test different growth patterns. Importantly, uh, as John reiterated in the introduction, it's not a strategy or policymaking document. Uh, and it does not provide a recommendation for growth. Rather, it is information or input into the planning policy like envisioned Cochrane twenty fifty that will dictate growth, uh, through policy. So we'll go through four components of the growth study this evening. I'll run us through, uh, the first two sections, uh, section one, land supply and section two, land demand. And then Chris will, uh, take over for section three and four, the land suitability assessment and the pathways of growth. So digging into land supply. In the map on the screen, uh, it's a little tricky to make out. Hopefully you have it, uh, in front of you on some, on slides. Uh, in green shows, uh, all available undeveloped lands in Cochrane within the town boundary as of December thirty first, twenty twenty two. We recognize that all the available lands, uh, some are more likely to accommodate growth than others. And so we wanted to net out lands or remove lands that we know have known constraints. Uh, so through the series of maps, we're removing, uh, lands, uh, like the, the flood hazard inundation mapping. So lands that are maybe impacted by flooding, lands that may be impacted by steep slopes and the natural constraints mapping, uh, lands that may be impacted or encumbered by, uh, rights of way or the emergency preparedness zone to the north. And then also lands that, uh, are designated as community designation lands, like the Canyon Baptist lands or Horse Creek Sports Park. Uh, really because the intent is for community amenity and not to be developed for residential, uh, purposes. And so once we removed the lands that we just spoke about in the series of maps from the available lands that you saw on that first map, uh, we're left with the town's total land supply within the town boundary, which is plus or minus seven hundred and fifty-two hectares. It's important to note, uh, that there's several considerations that make some of the town's land supply, uh, more readily available for development. And so in the lightest teal, you'll see lands that are, uh, least encumbered, uh, lands. They're most likely to accommodate growth, which is around five hundred and seventy-nine hectares. Uh, in a middle teal, you can see lands that have considerable or, or known constraints. And so these might be uh, types of tenure or local policy planning that's in place. Uh, and then in the darkest teal, you'll see the special policy areas within town, uh, that require more planning before they'll be able to accommodate future growth. And so a, a key takeaway from this, uh, slide is that the town solidly has five hundred and seventy-nine hectares that, of land that can accommodate growth. But depending on the growth approach, uh, that the town takes with, uh, the lands that have known development constraints or more planning needed in those for future policy areas, the town could have up to seven hundred and fifty-two hectares of land supply. Okay. Moving into the second component, land demand. Just wanting to run through the land demand methodology that we use to calculate total land demand. So we take, uh, residential land demand, uh, plus non-residential land, land demand to get the total land demand to twenty forty-seven. On this slide here, you'll see, uh, population projections or four different, uh, population projection scenarios and the total population in twenty forty-seven on the right-hand side of the, the chart. Uh, and we looked at several scenarios and you can see the average annual growth rate in the bottom, uh, portion of the screen that's associated with each. And each of the population projection scenarios, uh, take in a different account of regional growth and how much Cochrane will absorb, uh, accommodate within that regional growth. The growth study selected the high growth scenario, uh, so that kind of middle red, uh, it's an ap- average annual growth rate of three point nine percent. Uh, because it assumes the trend line of growth between two thousand and six and two thousand and twenty-one, uh, that we will assume will continue into the future. This is also the growth rate, uh, that was used for the recent water strategy and will be used for the forthcoming water and wastewater master plan. It's important to note here, we did include a very high scenario, which is a 6.2% average annual growth rate, which is the growth rate that the town has seen over the past 10 years between 2011 and 2021. We wanted to show this in order to demonstrate that you're likely not going to see this type of growth over a 25-year period, but you might see this for the next few years and want to demonstrate what that might look like if it was projected out. But I'll reiterate, we chose the high-growth scenario for the growth study, and you'll see it reflected throughout the remainder of the presentation. So using the high-growth scenario, we looked at projected unit demand. And so on the left-hand side, you'll see historic unit demand, and on the right-hand side, future unit demand. And the important piece here is that in 2047, the town is anticipated to see through the high-growth projections over 35,000 units, which sounds like a lot, but it's taking into account a similar growth pattern that the town has seen historically, which is roughly 200% growth. As growth continues under the high-growth scenario, wanting to indicate the change in projected unit demand. And so in 2021, there is noting 60% of units are single-family homes. But as we're projecting through the high-growth scenario in 2047, there'll be a higher proportion of total units being different housing forms. So more apartments and more ground-oriented multifamily that's anticipated. And so a key takeaway to be thinking about is the potential for the town to be thinking about higher densities when thinking about growth in the future. To calculate total land need, as the methodology outlined at the front of the land demand section, we took residential land demand, added it with a non-residential land demand to comprise the total land demand to 2047. We did this for each of the population projection scenarios, but selected the high-growth scenario you can see highlighted. And through this, the high-growth scenario anticipates the town will likely need 985 hectares of residential land, 166 hectares of non-residential land, for a total of 1,151 hectares that the town will need to accommodate or likely need to accommodate if taking the high-growth scenario into consideration. As part of our work, we also reached out to businesses to understand their perspective of growth in the community and understood that there's simultaneous growth and shifts occurring in the economy. So historically, strong sectors, manufacturing and construction, remain strong and are growing at a faster rate than in the CMRB or the Calgary metropolitan region. There's emerging sectors like information, cultural industries, and professional and scientific services experienced high employment rates. And employers noted there's an attractive lifestyle in Cochrane that they enjoy being able to offer their employees, as well as a lower cost of living in comparison here to the city of Calgary housing prices. One piece that they're facing into is the availability of industrial land. And so when thinking about growth or expansion within the town, there's a consideration or facing into a hard decision of whether there's the land to be able to do so within the town boundary or whether they need to go elsewhere for industrial operations if they want to maintain or expand. So a key question to consider is just how the town may anticipate opening up or thinking about industrial land growth into the future. So how can the town accommodate future growth? So again, using the high-growth scenario, we noted the 1,151 hectares that are likely required for the town to accommodate the growth that's anticipated. This translates to 24,000 new residential units and 166 hectares of non-residential land. However, there's a need to accommodate lands that have already been subdivided but are not yet occupied. And so when those lands are removed and the associated residential units and non-residential land, we come to a future land demand for the town, which is around 1,066 hectares, which translates to 22,300 residential units and 156 hectares of non-residential land. And so the thinking through the high-projection scenario, that the town can accommodate this future land demand through two different options. Either by absorbing growth through established area development or accommodating growth through new community development. So what does this all mean or how does this, what are we looking at here? And so earlier in the slide deck, we outlined the land supply, the range of 579 to 752 hectares. That 579 being the lands that are least encumbered. And if, depending on how the town approaches, the known developable constraints or the future policy areas, up to 752 hectares. And using the high-growth scenario and the land demand, there's 1,066 hectares that are likely required for future growth over a 25-year period. So this means that the town is, has a land supply deficit of around 500 hectares over the next 25 years. And there's an urgency for the town to be facing into the approach for growth, and you're doing so by completing a growth study. And wanting to look at when you start to run out of land supply under these growth, the high-growth scenario, and wanting to take a look at the very high as well, you can see with the threshold marker. And for the high-growth scenario, you're looking at running out of land or your land supply are coming up against it in plus or minus 15 years at the average annual growth rate. And in the very high scenario, running up against that land supply running out even earlier, around plus or minus 10 years from now. So it's important to, in order to start thinking about the length of time it takes to plan and build infrastructure for residential and non-residential uses. A reasonable question would be, what is the population of Cochrane once the town's full land supply is built out? And depending again on the town's growth approach to how it builds out the land supply, it could be between 67,000 people to 76,000 people at full build-out of the land supply. I will pass it over to Chris for land suitability assessment.
Thank you, Jen. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'll try to make my way through as I was coaching on the weekend, and my voice is about to go again this morning. It's a constant trend for me on Monday mornings, so or afternoons and evenings. So the third piece of the growth study is around land suitability. And there's really kind of two pieces to this that we wanted to show council today. First, you know, as you're thinking about the supply of land that you have within your jurisdiction, what is the suitability of that land to accommodate the uses that you need to accommodate or want to accommodate? The second piece is, how much influence do you have perhaps over that land supply? And so the next slides will speak to that. This first figure here shows within the town, it's a little bit faint in some of the greens there, but shows what lands are planned, and that's meaning what lands have local level policies. So neighborhood plan in place, air structure plan in place. Which lands are, and then which lands are unplanned, so which ones don't have that local level policy in place. And as you can see just from the numbers on the left-hand side, about 80% of all the lands remaining in town have local level policy in place. The little diagram there, the wheel, shows of those lands that are planned, what land uses are allocated to those lands that are planned. So what this is really highlighting is relatively within the remaining lands within town, there's limited ability to influence what those lands will become in the future unless there's amendments coming forward around those local level policies, which might offer that opportunity. Now, that being said, you know, we've hatched a number of the planned lands on this figure here to show there is some ability to influence some of those planned lands as they come forward. There's some, the smaller parcels in this figure are ones that are in local level policy but require further planning, they're special planning policy areas. So there's some ability to influence perhaps what those are in the future. The other lands there, just adjacent to the river on the east side, it's understanding those will be coming forward with some local planning policy amendments and some updates. So there might be opportunity there as well. So it was important for us, as we were doing the assessments and looking at different lenses, that we looked at all those lands that might offer that ability to influence that for council in the future. So the four land suitability lenses that we looked at were environmental, land ownership, employment, and off-site servicing. And really, the intent here is to consider these different lenses as planning policies coming forward to meet your future growth needs and see how that lines up. And obviously, that will be done through MDP policy, local level policy, et cetera. So the first piece was environmental, and this looked at a number of different factors. It looked at historical usage of the lands, it looked at topography, wetland coverage, key biodiversity zones, and other provincial data that's provided. And it looked at all those different pieces, provided criteria to those, and ranked them relatively within the remaining lands in town that you might have the ability to influence over. As you can see there from the ranking, there's a low ecological and a high ecological, going from the green down to the red. And the kind of the key takeaway here for the lands remaining within the town boundary is that most of them have kind of a medium to high ecological value, depending on, obviously, the lands that we're referring to. And this is important, obviously, as that policy is coming forward to council, to consider those factors as you're moving forward. And obviously, that can impact future growth and development of those lands. The second piece that we looked at was around land ownership, and this really speaks to the speed of development, perhaps, and the likelihood of development moving forward in certain, on certain parcels. So if the parcel had, was subdivided, had four or more subdivisions on it, it was giving, identified in red. If it was three or less, it's identified in the yellow, and then if it has no subdivision, it's in the green. So you can see there that there's a range within the remaining lands in the town from that perspective. Employment, there was a number of factors here that we looked at, you know, similar to the environmental. We provided some criteria around road network, rail access to the airport, parcel slope. And then through that criteria, got a relative ranking within the town. So the lands that would be showing more in the green would be higher suitability for employment lands, and those in the red would be lower. I think the key takeaway from this one for the lands remaining within the town is that most of the lands are low to medium. So that's not to suggest that no employment will be showing up on these lands in the future, but likely to see large amounts of employment would be, would probably be fairly limited. And in thinking about major employment areas, would probably be beyond these lands within the town. The other piece which is in progress is off-site servicing. So the town right now is on, Water Wastewater Master Plan is underway. So we're working with our team very closely on that. And really, the intent of this piece is to show for all the remaining lands in town, what is the infrastructure required to advance those lands? So the major off-site infrastructure that's required to advance those lands. And looking through it from a variety of lenses, but really, the key lens is who's responsible for bringing that infrastructure forward? A lot of major off-site infrastructure, the developer might front-end that and build it and deliver it. And so there's not really any kind of financial implications to the town. Whereas other off-site infrastructure, the town might be the one that needs to front-end that or deliver that. And then there is implications. So some lands, even though they might have major off-site infrastructure, might have very little impact financially to the town to deliver that and move that forward, where others might have a high impact to the town. So what we're hoping to do here with this, when this comes back to council in the new year, is laying out all the infrastructure, major offset infrastructure for all the parcels remaining in town, and then identifying how those have traditionally been advanced within the town from a front-ending, you know, perspective as well as a delivery perspective. The fourth piece of this is really on the pathways of growth, and this speaks to, you know, as the town moves forward, if you're to take a different path of how you want to address and accommodate growth, what is the impacts? And what does that look like for future land needs moving forward? And this ties nicely to the presentation I was just given on the MDP and some of the different scenarios that council is going to be contemplating on December 11th as you afford. On the number of slides here to follow, we have a number of different, three different scenarios and a bunch of different numbers of land needs. But really, the starting point needs to be, you know, your policy direction and what you're trying to achieve as a community. Obviously, land needs are important, but how you want to grow as a community is fundamentally the key question. And how that shows up with the pattern of growth that you're wanting to, should be the outcome. So the three different scenarios that we're laying out today that we want to share with council, on the far left is the baseline scenario. So what if you did not change anything? You continue to see a similar amount of intensification within your established areas that you've seen over the last decade and that you see densities on in the new areas continue to be the same as you see today. The second scenario is, well, what if we saw increased intensification within established areas? In this case, we identified in the orange kind of the core of Cochrane's downtown area. But that could be expanded, and this could be a little bit different looking, depending on how you see that pattern showing up. And then the periphery growth would be how you see it today. So same densities that you see today in your new communities. The third scenario is looking at, well, what if you intensified the established areas? Plus, you require new areas to grow at a higher density intensification. So looking at that and just talking through the impacts on the subsequent slides here. So this is the baseline one. I won't spend too much time. This is again just status quo, continuing to move forward. This is a similar layout to what you were seeing of Jen was presenting. On the far-left side, this is speaking to the number of new hectares under the high-scenario of growth, so plus or minus 4% per year. You're going to need about 1,066 hectares over the next 25 years. Right now, in the, in the community, you experience over the last 10 years, on average, about 20, plus or minus 20 residential units in established areas every year. So over 25 years, it's just shy of 500 units. You also experienced over the last decade, and extrapolate over 25 years, about 22 hectares of non-residential growth, which is, you know, a fairly, fairly healthy relative, in proportionally to what's in and demanding. So if we go status quo, over the next 25 years, you're going to have to accommodate just shy of 22,000 units in the new communities. And that leaves you of the deficit of land of what current supply you have of just shy of 500 or just shy of 300, depending on, again, how many lands come online within the current town boundary, based on some of them being a little bit more tricky than others to move forward and support development. Under scenario two, increased intensification in established areas. Again, this is really intended just to demonstrate what would the impact be to future land needs if you were to intensify some of the established areas and encourage that through policy direction, through investment decisions. And, you know, we really wanted to take a snapshot here of just what other communities are doing. For mid-sized communities, a lot of the communities are speaking to this within their policy, but not necessarily establishing targets as to what they want to achieve. The larger urban centers within Alberta, obviously Calgary and Edmonton, they are starting to apply targets and measuring how they're seeing this show up within their communities. So both the city of Calgary and city of Edmonton, over in the long range, you know, we're talking a 50- to 70-year outlook, are targeting 50% of all new units, new units that are being built are within the established areas of those communities. So as we were thinking about this, we wanted to be able to, you know, test something that would be valuable for council. And so we leaned on the city of Calgary, and over the last, since 2009, when they put in place their most recent MDP, they put in targets in there to hit the 50%, again, over the 60 to 70 years. Over the last plus or minus 10 to 15 years, they've been able to achieve 10% of all new units now are showing up in established areas. So they've seen a number of growth in that area relatively to where they started. And so as we were studying this out, you know, what if the town set direction to establish a target that was in alignment with that? So over the next 25 years, we want to be able to achieve of all new units, 10% of those are showing up within our established area. And so, you know, obviously, a question that we'd ask ourselves is, is this even possible under your current setup within your established area? And so we looked at a number of different factors just to test this and see, does this make sense or not? So number one, we looked at servicing capacity, and then we looked at housing stock, available land opportunities and land utilization. All of these hint at opportunities for redevelopment, perhaps, without major investments. Sometimes you would require some, but also is your current, the current market and things, other things hinting at the opportunities there? So from a servicing capacity perspective, on the left side is, again, major off-site sanitary trunks that service your downtown area, again, looking at the core of the downtown. For the most part, there's a lot of capacity there to support intensification within the downtown, and that's accounting for build-out of the rest of the community. Again, this is something our team's looking at through the Water Wastewater Master Plan. There are some limitations on the west side of downtown, but through some improvements that have been identified and to occur likely in the next, in short, say, short term, those limitations could be, could be removed and support, support that capacity as well. From a water distribution perspective, it's not as clean-cut perhaps as sanitary. It really depends on fire flow, and if that's very site-specific, analysis needs to be done through our team's analysis. So there is pockets within the downtown that can support land use changes and higher, higher fire flow requirements. Others will require some improvements, and that would be something that would be looked at through the local level policy as to where you want to see that intensification occur, and if the system can support that in that particular location. From a housing stock perspective, and this is, you know, I guess a quick lens to look at things from, from maybe how others would come to the community at things from, from maybe how others would come to the community and think about redeveloping. So two parameters to consider is your housing age stock, how old it is, and that can be a good indicator as to the financial feasibility of purchasing a property and redeveloping it, as well as the parcel width, and we've used here fifteen meters because this is a width that allows for, you know, perhaps a single family to turn into two semis, or a single family to turn into some room housing, for example, and that would typically be a good cutoff point for where that's possible. And as you can see here on the figure, there's a number of units, plus or minus about a hundred that are currently over fifty years old within the town of Cochrane, that's shown in the green in the map. The yellow, the remaining yellow ones are all the units that will become fifty years or older over the next twenty-five years. So within those two communities, East End and Glenbow, again, just a snapshot for council's consideration here to demonstrate this point, about plus or minus nine hundred parcels would meet that criteria over the next twenty-five years. From availability of land opportunities, this is another way to look at things, you know, is there parcels within our current downtown, in this case, that could see some intensification that are perhaps underutilized, that there's interest in or otherwise, as well as potential corridors where you're seeing amalgamation of these parcels showing up and interest within those? So there's obviously a number of those, and I think a good opportunity for intensification within a number of locations within your current downtown. And the last piece we looked at was land utilization, and so figure ground diagrams on the left-hand side, and this really just highlights the relative amount of building coverage on all the parcels, and as you can see, there's quite a bit of, underutilized is a strong word, because a lot of these lands are utilized to the highest point, but they don't have a ton of building coverage intensification, but they're meeting the need of the uses that are there today. On the right side, this just puts us in perspective, the old downtown, your building to parcel coverage is about thirty-two percent, whereas in the new downtown, east industrial, considerably less, so this just hints at there's major opportunity here for perhaps increased intensification in some of these areas with a lot of land that's available, as well as, you know, as we've heard from the MDP and through our discussions with business owners, the ability for some of these businesses to perhaps relocate and grow would offer up maybe some additional opportunities for intensification within these areas as well. So within scenario two, if we were to assume that the town targeted ten percent of all new units were to be accommodated within your established area, that obviously brings down the number of units that need to be accommodated in the new growth areas. And so the impact here takes your land needs down to, on the high side, about four hundred and ten hectares would be the deficit, and the low side, two hundred and thirty-seven hectares. The last one we looked at was the increasing intensification within established areas, so exactly the same as scenario two, hitting that ten percent target over the twenty-five years, but also increasing your intensification within the new communities. And so, you know, there's some regional policy that's hinting at this, you know, for the city of Calgary within the CMRB growth plan, master plan communities are, hit a target of twenty-five dwelling units per hectare. For the town of Cochrane, it's twenty, so that would be status quo, but if you were to trend that upwards and move the dial towards a higher density in those new communities, what would that look like? The town of Okeechobee, again, they haven't put hard targets per se within their MDP, but within that they're saying that new and mixed-use neighborhoods will achieve a minimum overall growth density of thirty units per hectare, and it's moving towards that is what the policy states within their document. So, you know, the town is to start moving towards that and suggesting for new communities, you have to provide a higher density and a different pattern of growth, then the impacts are fairly, this would be the most significant for sure within the land deficit that shows up. So you'd be sub of three hundred on the high side and just over a hundred on the low side, depending again on how much land is developed within town boundary, based on some of it being a little bit more constrained than otherwise. So it just summarizes those different scenarios that we looked at and the implications to land needs over time. And then the key next steps here as we wrap this up, you know, finalizing the land suitability analysis, so this is really working with the water wastewater master plan, making sure that we're threading together all of these different pieces that really help inform the long-term decision-making for the town. And that's intended to be in quarter one of 2024, so we'd be suggesting the finalization of this growth study and coming to council for resolution in quarter one of 2024. And then obviously, this is always in the background being connected to the MDP work that you just saw, and making sure that we're trying to connect as many pieces as possible as it comes in front of council. That concludes the presentation, happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you. It's a data-rich evening tonight.
Councilor Reed, say it again.
I had a couple of questions if I could. While this is not a strategic or policy document, I'm trying to appreciate the land use sustainability lens as, and maybe remind me, just how, what is its connection to the Cochrane planning growth and the availability of water?
Sorry, I missed the, I missed the last part there, Councilor Reed.
The, well, I'm really getting at, is what's the relationship between the growth planning document and the availability of water?
Yeah, a good question. Through the chair, I think the key piece here is really how you project growth and how you plan for growth, again, assuming that's the objective of councils and that you want to see that within your community, but that will identify, you know, you have to be, as you're going through a growth study, there's different pieces within there from a projection perspective that you'll want to lean into. From a conservative perspective, the high growth scenario is what we've suggested is one that aligns with a number of different master plan exercises you're doing. So that would be one that you want to be more conservative in making sure you have water supply in place, you have infrastructure that's leading in place, those are things that the growth study would help inform. And then obviously, when you're thinking about other financial matters, maybe you want to be a little bit more conservative in how you're projecting. So there's, there's different elements there that will really, I think, inform your master planning and your long-range planning to make sure that you have planned lands in place, you have the infrastructure in place, and water supply being a big critical piece of that for sure.
I think Mr. Heineman has a point, too.
Yeah, Councilor Reed, I think it's a great question. We've been working with Urban on not only the water connection fees, but also the overall water strategy, so there are lots of connections between that work, and certainly we're not doing this work without that water in mind.
Well, I don't know that'll affect me in my lifetime, but I do worry about climate change, and while we might secure water licenses, if it isn't water for those licenses, then it becomes a increasing problem. So I, I wonder when you, when you say, you know, we approve this land growth, but it has to be connected somehow to the availability of water, whether we have licenses or not. Well, even if we have licenses, the question is, is there water going to be there, I guess? Councilor Wilson reminded me that this is a much larger question than, than town council, but it is one that weighs on my mind. The other questions I had were, I was curious how accurate the growth management study of 2013 was as compared to today?
Good question through the chair. The growth study that was done previously tiered growth as it got, as the community got larger, and was recognizing that as you get bigger, typically what you see in communities is the growth rate will drop. And so early on, the growth, the growth rate was a four percent plus or minus on average, which is pretty accurate with Cochrane has seen over the last number of years on average. The shorter window, again, as Jen pointed out, it's been on the higher side around six percent, but over a longer timeframe, it's been about four percent. Where that started to split apart was later on, as you grow further into that growth study, it was going down to three percent and two percent, and that's where there was some splitting off. But from a total land availability from the community build-out, still fairly accurate, it was just that the rate of growth that you were seeing exceeded what was projected. And I think it just highlights, this is something that almost all communities that we support struggle with, you're never going to get it right on a growth projections perspective, and it just really highlights that communities need to touch these things more often and have a, find a simple, straightforward way to true them up, so that you can, that informs all of your master planning, it informs all of your capital planning and your tenure cap line, et cetera. It feeds into a lot of things, so there's an ability to true these things up more often. Again, that's maybe every couple of years, then those deviations don't become so big. But we've worked with communities where they've updated their growth strategy every couple of years, and there's been major swings in the assumptions. And so that can be problematic when you're trying to long-range plan.
Yeah, I would have predicted that it probably wasn't completely accurate, and I appreciate that, but I love what, oh, maybe not love, it's too, but I like what you've done in terms of the different types of scenarios, so that it helps us, and I think it's better to plan for potentially the worst-case scenario, worse may be not the proper term, but the highest, is that what you use, the term higher or very high?
Yeah, so if I could, I'll just, I don't know how to go back here. I just want to, and Jen did a good job pointing this out, but just to emphasize this point, because it's really important, you know, obviously, depending on the type of planning you're doing, which you might need to be more conservative than not. And so what we wanted to do here is just really demonstrate, the high scenario is one that, based on the trending regional population growth that Cochrane's seeing and how we keep trending that forward, the high growth is probably what you'd likely see show up. And that's a conservative rate, and something that you probably want to lean into for your master planning and otherwise, and it aligns with what's been used, like what Jim said, for water strategy, but also for your master, some of their master plans underway. We wanted to show the very high because this might show up for a few years, might show up for the next three to five years, maybe a bit longer, and that just truncates how much land you have a lot quicker. And so it's important to have a handle on that as to how, how much bandwidth you have there from a land supply perspective, to make sure, again, if the intent is to continue to grow, they have the ability to meet that need in the market.
Great, I have two more quick questions. What is, what is the relationship to our growth plan and CMRB?
Well, I mean, from a high level, I mean, the CMRB obviously identifies Cochrane as a growth area, so there's alignment there. There's indication or direction from the CMRB about densities and things like that that need to show up, so obviously we're trying to capture those within the scenarios. And then there's obviously indications within the regional growth about the types of development within communities that should show up, the patterns of growth, and that'd be more aligned with what you might see within your MDP as well, more the policy direction.
Because you kind of think that CMRB would have a responsibility to a like thing for the region, which would then dictate, well, maybe dictate, but certainly influence what might happen in every one of these communities within that region.
Yeah, through the chair, that's a really good question, a good comment. For our first connection point was working with CMRB to get their data on that projection. When we went through that analysis, and again, it was only a few years old at that point, it was already underestimating where Cochrane was going to be. So we deviated from those projections because it was already underestimating where Cochrane was at today. And then we pivoted and adjusted our projections based on that. So we did, we did look into the regional growth projections and see if we could lean into that, but it wasn't aligning with where Cochrane was at today.
Okay, and then the last question I had was, in the report, it indicated that some jurisdiction was causing you delay. I was wondering, how does one address that in terms of being able to move forward?
Sorry, I couldn't hear that question.
Sorry. In the, in the report, it says that some jurisdiction caused a delay, and I was wondering what the answer was to be able to move forward with, if you had a jurisdiction that was causing you to have delay?
Right, I believe that's referring to that retrieval of the data early on in the process, and that we encountered some delays in getting some of that regional, regional data to be able to test that against what we're seeing today.
Yeah, and then finally, I'd just like to comment that I really like where we're going with this, because I think it's really important that we, you know, again, the foundation of a great house is, or a house is important as a foundation that you lay, and I think that we need to be making plans and laying plans and foundations now for the future, whether it's ten years out, or twenty-five years out, or fifty years out, I think now is the time to be able to put those things in place, so I like, I like where this is taking us, thank you.
Councilor Fedeck.
Hi, I'm just curious on the industrial front, so like on your ability to influence, it's such a small portion of two percent. Have you, have you looked long-range as to how or where kind of that industrial piece can grow to? I mean, I worry that when we look at where we could be going, especially with high growth, it's residential influenced, right, rather than looking at that tax base from coming from a more of an industrial base, right?
Yeah, through the chair, so if I understand your question correctly, more about what's lands are suitable maybe to accommodate that growth as you move forward?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so there's some lands, obviously, you know, we, some lands right now, you know, South Bow being the one who has some large parcels that accommodate some non-residential, so some of that will be obviously absorbed through that build-out, but through the analysis that we're doing here, there wasn't many, well, there wasn't really any parcels of any size that jumped out to say this is really suitable for major employment areas. Again, it's not showing the South Bow lands here because those already have planning in place, and so they're going to accommodate some of that growth in the future. But I do think, you know, from what we heard from business owners that love being in Cochrane, you know, their staff love being here, but they're, they're being, they're successful and they're expanding, and they're looking for opportunities where they can grow in place or make some tough decisions. So I do think that that's something that's consistent with what MDP just indicated in some of their, what they're hearing from the community, but also we heard in the community from the business owners, is thinking about where those land uses can show up will be a pretty critical piece as you grow.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, similar comments from me. I just take away from my point of view so far, and I think you highlighted it quite well on the last slide, was no matter what scenario unfolds in Cochrane, there's a deficit of land supply. And then the other thing I wanted to highlight, and I can't remember where it showed up in the, it might have been in the, in the package in the, right in the beginning of the agenda item, saying that this is not a plan, and I just want to make this highlight for the public, that this is not a plan to grow, it's a plan for growth. And would that be a correct way of, and I know those are, that's a very subtle difference, just two letters, but one is, this is not an aspirational document to get to that population growth, it's how we're going to plan and manage the growth that's coming.
Yeah, through the chair, I agree. This is really setting that foundation that Councilor Reed's speaking to. It's trying to be as objective as possible to say, based on what you've seen, where trends are going with housing demands, population growth, this is what Cochrane can anticipate to see over the next twenty-five years. And as I mentioned, obviously you'll want to true this up more often, just to make sure that if those are tweaking or changing, you're capturing that. But again, this is trying to set that foundation so it can allow council to make those policy decisions on how, how you want to see growth show up within your community.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So we can expect back in Q1 of '24?
That's correct, yeah.
All right, thank you for the presentation tonight. I think, did you get everything you needed from council at this point, administration?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, lots of information tonight. That exhausts the business portion of the meeting. We do have a couple of in-camera items. We need a motion to go in camera. Councilor Reed, so moved, all those in favor? That carries.